This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Let's explain what's going on tonight here, just so we know. We have a little bit more people from the public and also from the press tonight, so. We actually have two public hearings that we are going to have before the city council meeting begins, and we're obviously behind a few minutes by. And as you all probably know me, I like to be punctual, and we're just a little bit behind here. The first resolution has to do with Franklin Street right away, and we're going to discontinue the use of that right away, since we never used it to begin with, so. We'll begin that public hearing, I'll call that meeting to order. Public hearing to order at 6:04 PM. In attendance, council members. Sandy, do this real quick for us.
All right, Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczowski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Yeah, we got them all. Next up, then, let's have Justin just explain the purpose of this hearing for us.
So this is the discontinuation of Franklin Street and an alleyway from Granite Street up to Pleasant Street. This is the second reading or the adoption is tonight. This was discovered, or we came upon this doing our Granite Street project, where we have this right-of-way there of a block of Franklin Street and alleyway, believed not to be improved because of the underlying bedrock. We have utilities that circle the block around each side servicing all the properties in that area. So further improvements to these sections of right-of-way would not be cost-effective, and we don't believe the city would ever utilize that. So seeing that this right-of-way has no value to serve the general public, is why I moved forward with vacating these sections of the right-of-way. The, excuse me, the legal description is in your packet, showing the parts that we're looking to vacate. There was an aerial showing the areas in the last description, did not transfer over to this one. If you'd like to see that, I can give that to you anytime.
All right, thank you, Justin. So at this time, we would take public comment and testimony in favor of the resolution to discontinue Franklin Street from Granite Street to Pleasant Street. So anybody that would like to give testimony in favor, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody that'd like to make testimony in favor? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to testimony in opposition. Do we have any testimony in opposition of this resolution? Any testimony in opposition? So at our council meeting tonight, we will be acting on this resolution and voting on that resolution tonight. Let it be known that we had nobody either testimony in favor or in opposition at this public hearing, and we are closing this hearing at 6:07 PM. All right, the other hearing. The other hearing has to do with the mask resolution that is on your agenda tonight. We asked for a public input on this, and we are calling this a hearing to order. And we still have all 11 council members in attendance, the mayor and the 10 council members in attendance for this meeting tonight. And this has, the purpose of this hearing is to hear what your thoughts are on the wearing of a mask in the city limits of Wapaka. So we kind of changed how we were going to do the public input tonight. We're going to ask the individuals that are in the library meeting room to actually come into the council chambers and step up to the podium and speak to us directly in front of us. So we'll use the chief to bring them in on an individual basis. So Brian, whoever wants to go first. And those of you that are listening, this is public input. You must give your name and address for the record, and your discussion cannot last more than three minutes.
Hi, I'm Russ Bakowitz, 124 East Lake Street, Wapaka. I'm one of the local physicians. Thank you, council, for letting me speak tonight. I come to you before you tonight in support of a mask resolution, a mask ordinance. I want you to see what it is that I wear every day to protect myself and to protect my patients. This is actually the very minimum protective gear that I would wear as I'm seeing patients. We have had increasing numbers of cases, we've had increasing test positive, our numbers are rising. I am very grateful for the governor's mask ordinance, but I also recognize that there are, there are people that are in opposition, that this may not be something that lasts. The legislature has said they may, they may vote to rescind this, and that it may need to fall to local communities to decide how they're going to handle this. I've written several letters, I think some of my partners have also written letters. Partly what I wanted to tell you is that, as we're going forward, we are seeing, right now, we have three of our providers are out due to contact with COVID-positive family members, so they're unable to work. This puts us in a terrible bind in terms of having the physical staff to take care of people. We also have, we have three different methods of testing people for coronavirus, one of which is we don't have supplies for, so we're down to two, one of which is a send-out. So our testing is limited, and we're not even to flu season yet. So I would plead with you to endorse a mask resolution, a mask ordinance, because it is one of the very effective, simple ways that we can help to try and limit virus spread, and our healthcare community needs all the help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Just a reminder, as we bring in the next individual person, this is a time for residents to give their public input. This is not a question-and-answer type setup here, so they'll just be giving their public input. We'll have to, we'll have to do it like baseball, you're up. Who's on deck?
Hi, thank you. My name is Savannah Frederickson, and I live on Maple Street. Do I need to give my address?
That's good enough.
115 Maple Street, okay. I appreciate what the doctor said, but as a community member, my opinion is to not have it, and these are my reasons. Because I feel like you're pressing things on people, and as hard as you try, it doesn't, it kind of matters, but it really doesn't matter that much, because even just from the time I've been here, I've touched the same door handle all of you touched, multiple people from this room have been in that room, and I'm not, no disrespect to you, mayor, but your mask wasn't even over your nose when you came in there, and like, the gentleman that escorted me in here, his mask was kind of broken, and my point being, you can do, you can make a mandate or ordinance or whatever, but people are still touching everything, and they're doing these things. And I think the kids going to schools, and especially, I think of like, kids in daycare, and they're there for 12 hours a day, and who are they looking at? They're looking at this, and I don't think that some people, like teachers and daycare workers especially, shouldn't be forced to wear masks, because I think kids growing up, especially children, shouldn't be forced to wear these masks. So that is my opinion, and I hope as a community member, you will take that into consideration.
Thank you, Savannah. Actually, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it. I do want to correct you, though, my mask has been over my nose the whole time, it might slip down as I talk, but I pull it back up as quick as I can. All right, next up. You just have to give people credit just for, you see how nervous she was? Just to.
She called today.
Yeah? Exactly. Go ahead, stand right at that podium there. How are you tonight, sir? I'm talking right here, sorry. How are you tonight?
I'm fine, thank you.
Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Leonard Sheard, I live at 910 Mead Drive, Wapaka, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Leonard. Go ahead and give us your comments.
Dimitri had sent out an email, I'm guessing to probably all of his constituents, announcing that this meeting was going to cover the subject of the mask, and it's something that I've been following for some time, and have some very strong feelings about, which I expressed in an email to him, and I'm guessing he probably forwarded that to pretty much everybody. In that email, I have copied and pasted a number of different articles that appeared all the way from, I think probably March of this year, up to just maybe either yesterday or today, most recent one that I found. And essentially, as I said, at the end of that email, other than my editorial comments, "A resolution or ordinance mandating masks will accomplish nothing but making a few people feel warm and fuzzy, but how the heck do you plan to enforce it? Will you throw me in jail if I refuse to pay the fine? Is it that important to add another regulation on top of the one that the state or county may be issuing?" And so my point is, this has already been addressed by the state, and I'm assuming that the state has precedence over pretty much anything that the city might pass, and I strongly feel that they ought to go with what the state is issuing, and have it debated there and taken care of. Personally, I think that this issue of the COVID-19 virus, which started out as the Chinese virus, which graduated to the Wuhan virus, which graduated through a number of different names, just because people got upset as to what it was being called, and now it's a SARS variety of some kind as well, that has been politicized way beyond what can be considered science. And for a long time, I have been of the opinion, I'm going to say, that science is no more than the knowledge I have right at this moment. At this moment now, after it passed for a second, it has changed, and the knowledge that we had then can be countered, countered, it can be called wrong, or it can be confirming what we thought we knew. And the problem with this idea that science is backing up either the wearing of the mask or science is saying that we shouldn't wear a mask, I think is a big error in the minds of people that use that as a threat, to shout people down, and it's effective in some areas. But if you look at it, all the science that we're quoting in the news media today, whether it's related to climate, whether it's related to disease, whether it's related to race problems in this country, it all changes, and it changes very quickly on some of those issues. So I ask you, drop this subject before it becomes a real thorn in the side of the city with people that are not going to follow it, and it's just going to cause a problem for your enforcement agencies. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Leonard. Thanks for coming tonight. I do, again, I want to take this opportunity to just correct one thing that he said. It is true, as what we have for a resolution tonight, if we pass that, the governor's order would be more restrictive than what our resolution is. The governor did say in his order, though, that cities could be more restrictive than the state order. This, in this case, that's not true, so we would have to follow the state order if we were to just pass this resolution tonight. I'm just trying to fill in a little bit here, as we go forward. And those of you that are watching this from the public, and those of you that are here tonight giving public input, as well as council members, and we have been inundated with emails, and we are, and I can only speak for myself, but I hope that all of our council members are taking all of those emails into consideration, even though we are not going to read all those emails into the record. We have someone coming here, chief?
No, that's all.
That's all? Okay. All right. So we ended up doing testimony in favor of and testimony in opposition at the same time here, so I'll just declare this hearing closed at 6:21 PM, and we'll go ahead and go right into our council meeting. Give me one second here, and Sandy a second here to make sure that we're all set. All right, welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting tonight. We had two public hearings, and that's why we're on a little bit late tonight, at 6:22 PM, and I call this meeting to order, and let's begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Give me just one minute here, will you? Sorry. Sorry for being secretive, you'll understand in a minute here. Okay, so we have Cork's open meeting statement.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Preparatory notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And take a roll for us again, Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here, here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here, here.
Alan Keeland.
Here, here.
Scott Porczowski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here, here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, next up, you have the consent agenda, Sandy tells me that we have no additions to that. All of these items that you see on the consent agenda are items that you will vote on with one motion. If you would like to see any of these items moved to the regular agenda when you're, where you discuss them individually, this is the time to let us know, let me know, that you would like to see them on the regular agenda. If there are no changes to that, then I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, next up, you have the regular agenda. I am asking for one change on the regular agenda. You have, number seven is non-agenda and announcements, is number seven, and unfinished business is number eight, I'm asking that you switch those around. So we're going to do unfinished first as number seven, which is the next item after the right, approving the agenda, and then we'll do the non-agenda items and the announcements after the unfinished business. If you're okay with that, I would need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Peterson.
Second.
Who is the second, I'm sorry? Lori, to approve the regular agenda with that, with that one change. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, so unfinished business, this is actually part of the public hearing that was held tonight, it's a resolution number, and it has a number now tonight, resolution number 1464, this is an emergency face covering requirement during COVID-19 pandemic. Aaron, do you want to just set this up for us, and what they have in their packet, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Smith. So, as we know, we had a discussion a couple weeks ago as a council, after Alderman Keeland brought forward the prospect of a requirement of face masks to be worn within the city. The result of that conversation was, as it's shown in your packet on page 67, resolution number 1464, we tried to take everything basically into account that existed in our conversation as a council a couple weeks ago, and we had worked on this, we drafted it, I know Mayor Smith, myself, Tom, and other legal council drafted this as a result of those conversations, and you guys have all had a chance to look at it within your packets. Now, as Mayor Smith said during the public hearing, this is a little different circumstance than we thought we might be in here, just because of the order from the state, or from Governor Evers. If this was passed and acted on, and from council tonight, would still be under the state order, as Mayor Smith said, this is less restrictive than the state order. One thing to take into account, and I think will be a part of the discussion, is if the state order was not in place anymore, then it would fall back on this resolution. So that's kind of what we're here to discuss tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that result as a council discussion, and we can move forward from that.
Okay, so, based on, I'm not sure how much discussion we're actually going to have tonight, but again, we have people that, council members that are virtually attending this meeting tonight, and we also have council members, obviously, that are, that are in the council chambers tonight. I appreciate that we try to work through this slowly and make sure that I recognize you before you start speaking, and please give your name, too, don't expect me to recognize your voice, even though I think I can, but let's make sure that I, that I can recognize that. Anybody want to start the discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
I just want to ask, Aaron, will the question-and-answer page that's on our, will that be filed with this resolution to go along with it?
Absolutely, yeah, the question-and-answer was to give insight into what this meant for both council members and for our residents and businesses, and that would be promoted on our website.
Makes things much clearer, so I'm hoping that's good.
Okay, anybody else that would like to speak? We got here.
Dimitri Martin.
Okay, Dimitri, go ahead.
Yeah, so I've been monitoring all of the emails that were sent in to, I look input at cityofwapaka.org, and I add up a total of 281 emails, and I just want to share that 63% of those were in favor of the mask resolution. I went through that list of 281, and I attempted to identify which were from the City of Wapaka, and then I created a subtotal, and eighty, there were 77 responses from within the city that I were able to identify. 82% of those are in favor of the mask resolution. Then I looked at just my Alder District, District number four, representing wards four and six, and there were 38 responses there, 71% in favor of the resolution. I also looked through the language of the different emails, for and against, and I pinpointed which ones were from medical professionals, doctors and nurses, and I found 12 that were from medical professionals, and all 12 were in favor of a mask resolution. And so I just want to share those statistics with the public and with the rest of the council. I have posted those statistics on my Facebook page, if anyone wants to see them in greater detail.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, there was somebody else that was trying to speak.
It's Alan.
Alan, thank you. This is Alder person Alan Keeland.
I disagree a bit with the, with which of the resolutions is more restrictive, and I guess I would like to suggest that we change our resolution to mirror that of the governor's. So in other words, we put the same sunset date in it, and also the masking issue for juveniles, five-year-olds versus four-year-olds. That way, if the governor's order does get overturned, we still have something in place that mirrors what he was trying to accomplish.
Okay, Alan, if it's okay, can I just respond? I really don't have a response to the, to the difference in the, in the date, you know, whether it's September 28th, I think, versus October 31st, but I do have a response as far as what you call the juvenile age. The reason that we used four and under is because the school district has come, the Wapaka school district has come out with their requirement that four K through 12, if they attend the schools, will be required to wear masks, and that's why we chose the four versus the age five. Okay.
I understand.
All right, anybody else?
Mayor, I would like to speak, please.
And that's Paul Hagan, I'm assuming?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Certainly. My question is, since this is in resolution form, do we even have the ability to mandate a action or, or an inaction in a resolution form versus an ordinance form? I can certainly understand if we, our resolution would be for city buildings and city employees, but for... for, uh, non-city properties and businesses, can a resolution be used to mandate mask-wearing versus an ordinance?
I think that's a great question for Tom Hart. Attorney Tom Hart, please.
Um, the answer is yes. Uh, and the statute, um, which, gives the municipality the power to, um, make such declarations, does say that local units may declare by ordinance or resolution emergencies, and this is an emergency resolution. So specifically, the statute does say resolution.
Okay, other comments? Dave Peterson.
Uh, I've read all the emails and I appreciate every one from both sides of the aisle. Um, some were kept short, just yes or no, and some gave some extra description as to why. I appreciate particularly the one from, I'll just, first name was Ivy, and another one from a person named Erin, E-R-I-N, that I really totally agree with, which would be on the negative side. Um, concerned about who would enforce this? Are we putting enforcement in the hands of the business owners? Apparently, it starts there. They have to ask the person to leave, and then if they don't leave, then police will get called to come and get, or have a disorderly type thing. Um, I also agree with Dimitri when he said, uh, I, we're not medical experts here by any means. Who knows if we're even right, what we think, because things change so fast. Nationally, they change. Chirid today will be changed in a week from now. So no matter what we decide, you know, down the road, we'll just find out if we did it right or wrong. Uh, but everyone, all the medical side seems to take the yes side. So it's a good thing that way. And because of the, uh, sixty, thirty, thirty-five percentage, if it was fifty-fifty, I would vote no. Because it's sixty-five, thirty-five, I will vote yes for the resolution. I don't know if we went to a full ordinance, if I would vote for that, yes or no. For the resolution, I'll vote yes, based on public's input.
Okay, thanks Dave. Uh, other comments? Anybody?
This is, this is-
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Um, our sheriff has, Sheriff's Department has stated that they will not enforce the, uh, masking mandates. Um, and indeed, um, the vast majority of county sheriffs have also said that. Um, and in our last meeting, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, Police Department stated that they, it would just be too much for them to enforce that. Uh, I also read many, many of the emails, and I felt that the folks who were definitely against this had some very valid points, and I still believe that this is governmental overreach.
Thanks, Paul. Um, I, Brian, do you wanna explain maybe Chief Ozell, this actually is, that I'm asking. First of all, can you just explain, um, how you are going to handle the governor's order in the, in the city of Wopaka, and then, and then just follow it up with, uh, if, if the, if the order was to go away, how would that, how would you handle it with the resolution?
So first of all, we just want the citizens to know that, um, it's important to, obviously, try to follow the governor's order, but, um, unfortunately, our resources are very limited as to what we have for our department with responding to other complaints. Um, we hope that people in the committee understand what the issue is, and, you know, for business owners and the property owners, you know, we're asking them for voluntary compliance. That's the biggest thing. Um, if there is an issue that does happen in a store, and people do refuse to leave, the Police Department will respond, and we will take the appropriate action that is needed. Um, I mean, the biggest thing that we're looking for is compliance. Um, there could be a trespassing or disorderly conduct. And I guess the other part is, you know, if people do see people not wearing masks, not to approach them, you know, try, just try to maintain social distancing. There could be a reason why that individual doesn't have a mask on, and we don't wanna see a confrontation happen. Um, I guess the biggest thing is, you know, all of us trying to work together here.
Thanks. And, and quite honestly, whether it's the governor's order or the resolution, it's unchanged how the Police Department will handle it within the city.
That is correct.
Good. Anybody else that would like to add anything? Okay, what's on your agenda is the resolution. Uh, you can obviously, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, you can make a motion to table, uh, you can be inactive. But we need to move forward some way here, so if anybody would like to make a motion, I'm, I, make sure you see-
Move to approve.
Okay, that's Dimitri?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Martin, a second by Fair, that we approve resolution number fourteen sixty-four. This is a emergency face covering requirement during the COVID-19 pandemic. Any further discussion? Sandy will call her own.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
No.
Alan Keeland. Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Alright, uh, thank you. Let's, uh, move on then. We have, uh, uh, some unfinished business from ordinance number zero-six-twenty-twenty. Uh, this is an ordinance under the city of Wopaka, chapter two of the governing body creating section two-point-one-seven. This is the removal of disruptive persons at council, uh, committee or any other city meetings. And Aaron, you wanna just touch on why this is on the agenda and, and, uh, let us know if you have heard any, uh, comments on this ordinance?
Yeah, thank you Mayor Smith. Uh, so as we talked last meeting, this is on the agenda, um, came up a, a couple of months ago, and we were discussing, you know, if somewhere, one were to get unruly, whether it be a council member, or a member of the public, or a department head, or whatever it may be. Um, you know, we would want to continue to run our business, whether it be a council meeting or a committee meeting. Um, and we wouldn't want it to disrupt what we were trying to do that night. What are our options as far as moving along? And removing a person, uh, from a council meeting, obviously, we consulted legal counsel because we wanted to make sure we were, um, abiding by our open meeting laws. The result of that was, oh, yes, you, you likely do have, you have the authority to do that, but you should really administratively have an ordinance that states that. So this is a result of that. It's an administrative piece. Um, you guys have had a chance to see it now, a couple of times. I have not heard any, um, comments for or against, uh, the ordinance. Um, so it is as you see it in front of you, and I believe it's on page seventy-four of your packet. So we'd be looking to, to take action on this tonight.
Alright, again, as Aaron stated, this, this actually is the second reading of this, so we can take action on this tonight. If you choose, so we'd be looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number zero-six-twenty-twenty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve ordinance number zero-six-twenty-twenty. Any discussion? Sandy will call her own.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright, uh, Aaron, thank you. Sandy, thanks. Um, uh, okay, let's go back to non-agenda items and announcements. We have a couple of items under there. First of all, we-
I think Mayor Smith, I think we have resolution fourteen sixty-one under unfinished business.
Oh, is that on the next page?
That's right.
Alright, uh, Justin, you wanna, if, this was a public hearing earlier tonight. Give us your abbreviated, unabridged-
Sure thing, Mayor. So starting on page seventy-five of the packet is the resolution to be adopted tonight for that vacation of Franklin Street in the alleyway in between Granite and Pleasant Street. I think I've, uh, described this in length multiple times. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
You know, this is one of those items where we wouldn't even know about it if somebody didn't look at the map, because there is no way that you could get a road where there's, or an alleyway where they're suggesting to put one on the map, so.
Justin, that's as brief as I've ever heard you up there.
Seriously.
Somebody write that down. Alright, we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Resolution fourteen sixty-one.
Uh, motion by Fair, second by Keeland, that we approve resolution number fourteen sixty-one. This is a resolution to discontinue, uh, the Franklin Street right-of-way in the alleyway from Granite Street to Pleasant Street located at city of Wopaka, Wopaka County, Wisconsin. Discussion? Sandy will call her own.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Alright. Aaron, Sandy, is it okay if I go back now? Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have, uh, non-agenda items and announcements. We have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to Barbara Ober for her twenty years of service to the city of Wopaka. I'll just read it real quick here. Uh, this is a certificate of appreciation that certifies that Barbara Ober, in recognition of service to the citizens of Wopaka from eight-twenty-eight to two thousand to the present, uh, has been employed by the city. Obviously, we thank Barb for her twenty years of service. Twenty years, that's a lot, uh, of service, um. And, uh, we really appreciate that, uh, um, I'll make sure that, or Sandy will make sure that she gets this certificate. We couldn't convince her to show up tonight. Alright, uh, next up, I understand that we have some, uh, more public input, uh, for tonight, uh, and so Chief, uh, if you would, uh, those of you that are in the library meeting room that would like to give additional public input tonight on a non-agenda item, um, we're gonna ask you to walk in and stand by the podium, give your name and address for the record, and your discussion will be limited to three minutes or less. I forget to recognize our city staff, but even though, um, uh, I see Peg is in here, and Justin, and Aaron, and Sandy. Uh, Andrew is meeting with us remotely tonight, and so is Kathy, right? Am I missing anybody? Oh, and Chief Ozell's here tonight too, obviously, and Josh. Oh yeah, and Josh is hiding in his area. Hi Mike, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Can, can everybody hear me?
We can. Just state your name and address and go for it.
Michael Offarowski, six-eleven North Harrison Street, apartment three, Wopaka, Wisconsin. Forgive me, I'm nervous. I didn't have anything prepared. I'm just here to talk about, uh, the Black Lives Matter movement. I don't wanna mention the exact incident that happened. But I do want to speak in regards to the march itself. When we first had our initial meeting at the library, it was like a celebration. And it was also respecting those who lost their lives. It's it's very disconcerting to me that at that first meeting, gathering at the library, that we had at least three people in front of stores armed. And the group has received threats. So the last march, we had a couple people show up armed. And I personally, I'm not a, a huge Second Amendment nut. I would never own a gun. So it, it did concern me, but the Second Amendment is for everybody and not just conservatives. So when it comes to the march and the fact that, uh, the, uh, Black Lives Matter group has been threatened in the past, people who are anti-Black Lives Matter need to understand that they are not the only ones with Second Amendment rights, and that those who are, um, pro-Black Lives Matter also have the right to defend themselves. And Wisconsin is an open carry state, so this has set some people off, but while I am not for carrying weapons in public myself, I do understand the concern that the group had and why two of, uh, the marchers and those in attendance did have weapons. Uh, they were never pointed at anyone, at, excuse me, they were never pointed at anybody that I witnessed. They were these people were just there, um, that, uh, they had the weapons for protection of the group and self-protection, as there have been threats. So I just wanted to say that um, we are not a violent group, and it's just a shame that Black Lives Matter has a triggering effect to some people, where the fact that we're marching for racial equality has the effect to frighten people.
Mike, uh, thank you. Uh, you are over your three minutes, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yep, thanks. So, under our twenty minutes, uh, later tonight, uh, number ten, which has to do with issues and project discussion, Marcy, uh, Reynolds will be here tonight, and we are gonna allow her to just sit in with us as we discuss that.
Good evening, y'all.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are y'all?
Yeah, just give your name and address for the record, please, and, and, uh, go ahead.
My name is Lamont Lewis. I live at E twenty-nine, eighty-four Crystal Road, Wopaka. I just want to discuss the protest, Black Lives Matter. Um, I lived here for ten years, and I'm very disappointed- I lived here for ten years and I'm very disappointed in my community. There's a lot of closet racists. Uh, people have been threatening some of the leaders in the Black Lives Matter that's been going on in Wapaka. Excuse me. Just today, I work for the Wapaka cap. Just today, I was called the N-word several times. We have a huge problem in this community and for people to be against equality is just ridiculous. And that's why we need these protests. I could be here all day telling you guys the stuff I've been through. It doesn't matter because it's gonna continue. So, it's pretty much all I got. I just, I want everyone on board to support these protests because we need them. Because there's a lot of people in our county who's racist. We have racist cops and maybe even some of you guys have racist thoughts. I don't know, but we have a problem, a huge problem. And that's it. That's all I got.
Yeah, Lamont, can I- I know this isn't question and answer, but you said something and I didn't quite catch it. You're an employee of, of the taxi cab?
Yes, I am. And today I was verbally abused by a passenger today because I asked him to wear a mask and he called me a nigger more than once.
Thank you, Lamont.
Thank you.
Sorry that happened to you.
Yeah, I am too.
Hi, I'm Kim Tricky. Um, my address is one-six-three Northwestern in Ina, Wisconsin. I was here on Saturday for the Black Lives Matter protest. And I have been at several of these protests. And I have never felt so threatened at any protest ever around Wisconsin. We were immediately met with anger and hate and people giving us the finger and swearing at us. I was quite appalled. I really was. The police force, I felt, did nothing, um, as far as protecting us. That is why people came armed this time, to help protect us. We had someone attempt to run us over last time we were here. I looked up the mission statement and I believe the police, their mission statement is to protect and serve and to protect people's rights, to have a voice. I'm here because most of the citizens who are part of our movement, who live in this vicinity, are afraid to come forward and speak. So I'm trying to be a voice for those folks. Where is our right for freedom of speech? You know, we came to do a peaceful protest. The police had an option. They could protect and serve. They could have been part of our envoy. They could have helped assist us, but they chose not to. They chose to stop us, harass us, and aggravate us. They targeted members of our group. The young man, um, that unfortunately was arrested is an autistic young man. So, when the police go to grab him, what is his instinct going to be? I'm a mental health professional. I know how autistic people respond in a threatening, you know, when they are threatened and when they are grabbed physically. Okay? These officers had a multitude of different ways they could have approached us. I don't know if your city has, um, done any kind of training, any kind of mental health training, any kind of crisis training, any kind of de-escalation training, but I feel like something else is needed. So, I- I don't have much else to say, but I feel like I- I was just appalled at the way that, you know, and I know for myself, coming back here, since then, they have infiltrated many of our groups on social media and they have found me and sent me private messages that were threatening. These are people in your community. So, do you want to be known as a community that is full of racists? Or do you not want to be considered that in this community? I think you have to look at what you- what you want to be remembered as, what you want this community to be seen as. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to City Planning Commission meeting members that meeting tomorrow night is gonna be held a hundred percent virtually, so if you haven't received an invite to that meeting tomorrow, make sure you get one from either Aaron or Josh for tomorrow night's meeting.
What time is it?
Five-fifteen.
Five-fifteen.
Yeah, it's our regular Planning Commission meeting, so it should be on his calendar.
Hi.
Hello. Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
All right. My name is Cheyenne Bervort. I live at four-twenty Park Avenue Little Shoot. So I am not a constituent of Wapaka. But I am here because the people in your community do not feel safe here. People brought weapons to a protest because they did not feel safe exercising their First Amendment rights in your community. There was a peaceful protest a week before the events of last Saturday. And protesters were struck by a vehicle and nothing was done about it. Protesters were threatened with weapons and nothing was done about it. I participate in protests across the area and I have not been in Wapaka yet. But I drive in protests to prevent other vehicles from running people over because people are aggressive to people who are peacefully protesting. The racial divisiveness, inequality, and injustice that is happening in our communities and across the country. These are legal protests and the people who showed up with weapons on both sides, counter protesters and protesters, I assume, I can't speak for the people carrying in their vehicles, were carrying legally and practicing their Second Amendment rights. That woman in here who is advocating for better mental health training by police officers and how you should handle autistic people, she is correct. The way that officers handled that situation was so aggressive and inappropriate and escalating of the situation, I cannot even begin to describe how that made me feel as a person watching the situation, let alone a person who was there or being escalated by the police officers who are supposed to be there to keep everybody safe, not just the people that they agree with. And I just think that you need to consider that there are more people in your community than the people who look like you, than the people who are shouting the things that you agree with. And you need to consider that there are people who are afraid to come stand up here, who are afraid of the things they are hearing and seeing in your community. Thank you. Do I escort myself out? The officer was dealing with a different situation.
Cheyenne, I just have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Thanks for coming. Just wanted to check, did I hear this right? Did you say you have not been in Wapaka yet?
I have been in Wapaka and I protested with many of the people who were present. I was not present at the event. No.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure I got that.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
He'll show you all. Chief, is that it?
I don't know. I'm gonna check.
Well, thank you, sir. Mayor, that is it. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay, that was public input. Any council members that have any public input, uh, for tonight, or staff for that matter, that would like to speak on a, on a non-agenda item? All right, let's, uh, move on down to new business then, uh, we got some voting machines that we gotta look at and that's you, Sandy.
Uh-huh. My voting machine pages begin on page seventy-nine to eighty-three. The city's four electronic voting machines are, or will become obsolete by January first of two thousand twenty-three. And the Wapaka County is suggesting that we all, they would like the whole entire county to use the same machines, which is called an ICE, Image Cast Evolution Electronic Voting Machine. So, our vendor Command Central at this time, if we sign on before the end of August, is offering us a reduced rate. Instead of eight thousand four hundred and forty-four per unit, they will reduce it to six thousand and sixty, which, you know, of course, gives the ci- city a hefty savings. Besides that, the Wapaka County Finance Committee has also approved, that they will order the machines, pay for the machines, and then allow the city to have a two-year payback if we sign a contract with them. I think it's a great, it's a great deal. I don't want to miss this. I don't want to wait until, you know, middle of two thousand twenty-three and then be scrambling to find something, or two thousand twenty-two, excuse me, and then be scrambling to find something that works. So, I would, my requested action is that, um, you allow me to enter into a contract with Command Central to order two new voting machines and then, um, also enter a con- into a contract with Wapaka County to have them pay for it and will pay them the first half in the year two thousand twenty-one and the second half in the year two thousand twenty-two. So that's my request tonight.
Okay, uh, thank you, Sandy. So, again, uh, it makes sense that, that we are all on the within the area, obviously, or maybe the whole country has the same kind of machines that, uh, you vote with, so it seems to make a lot of sense to do this, plus the county is gracious enough to allow us to pay for this over a two-year period, so. All of it seems to make a lot of sense to Sandy and I, I agree with that, so. Any questions on that? Anybody would like to make a motion?
Mayor, Sandy is two enough?
It is. Actually, the county suggested it's so to Command Central that we only need one for our amount of people. My thoughts are, if we have two, we have a second one for absentees with the, with the volume of absentee ballots that are coming in, especially with the presidential coming up, that we're going to need, um,
Okay.
Oh, we're not gonna have it by the presidential. That's right. But still, for future, for future elections, everything's going more absentee than not.
You told me this this afternoon. I guess I wasn't listening as closely, but we presently have four.
We presently have four.
And we're going to two because these are that much more efficient.
Right.
All right, great. Thanks.
Mm-hmm, very much, yeah.
Okay. We're looking for a motion to approve.
Some of.
Uh, motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, that we purchased two into Image Cast Evolution Electronic Accessible Voting Systems and approval of entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Wapaka County to facilitate purchase of accessible voting systems with repayment of two years for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two budgets. First half will be payable on January fifth of two thousand twenty-one and the remaining balance would be paid by January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chesnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Porczaski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Demetri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten eyes, motion carried. Thank you.
Sandy, thank you for your work on that. Uh, Josh, are you around? Next one has to do with Wapaka Online.
Okay, um, as we've worked through our Wapaka Online expansion project in northern Wapaka County and western Outagame County, there's one area we've had trouble getting into up there that's in pretty high need of better internet service. And we've reached out to a number of property owners out there trying to find an existing structure, a silo or something of the like to use, and we're just not finding the right structure in the right spot with a willing property owner. Ralph and I have been talking to a number of other property owners in that vicinity about the possibility of renting some land to build a tower to, uh, help meet some of the needs we're looking at at this area. And we've come across a willing property owner that would allow us to do that with a land lease agreement. As far as the location, this would be east of Manoa, near the intersections of Highway T and N. And what's, uh, very advantageous to us on this area, um, in your packet, pass my memo, I've got a copy of the State of Wisconsin broadband map in this portion of B County. And it's one of the most underserved areas in the county as far as internet service goes. We've got a number of calls from this area that we cannot service with our current infrastructure, so we know there's a need up there for internet. Another advantage is this is, what I'm told, is one of the highest points in the county as far as elevation goes. And on the next page in your packet, kind of shows what the coverage area with a tower in this location would look like. And it actually, um, considering line of sight from individual houses covers quite an expansive area for a tower, so, um, it meets, uh, some needs as far as getting internet. And the other really good thing about this location is it allows us to put in a second path for redundancy and better service up to this whole area in the northern portion of the county that we expanded to. So right now, we've got one connection from Wapaka up to this area, a second connection up there would allow us to get more speed up there, um, kind of splitting the load between some areas up there to provide faster and improved service and just to have that redundancy in case one link or the other were to temporarily fail, we could switch everything over to one or another. And we've been working with a willing property owner up there and on a staff level, we've kind of came to an agreement with him on a potential land lease. And some of the highlights on that would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month and we'd pay that annually and we'd provide him with a couple free internet connections as well. The agreement would be in three-year periods with four guaranteed renewal terms. And the reason for that is it provides us some safety. We want to enter something that's long-term. We don't want to invest money in a tower. And then, you know, we want that there long-term, but we also want to provide a safety net should at some point we want to back out of this for any various reasons that that's built in there. Um, Wapaka Online would cover the cost of the construction and maintenance of the tower. The property owner would provide electric service to us. The property owner would provide electric service to us, along with twenty-four-seven access. We've got some termination clauses in the proposed land lease that we can terminate with ninety days' notice if Wapaka Online were to cease operations. And we can terminate with ninety days' notice at any end of any three-year term. If we terminate the agreement, there are a couple options as far as the future of the tower goes. We have right, first right to maintain, to remove that tower and reuse it for another use. If the online or the city does not want it, we would sell it to the property owner for a dollar if they wish to obtain it for any reason. And if neither of those options are viable, then we'd have the tower removed. The property owner would have some termination clauses in the agreement. They could terminate the agreement if we don't pay the lease. If the tower becomes unsafe or unstable and we don't have it fixed within a reasonable period of time would be their termination in there. So what I'm asking for tonight is the city to approve signing the lease and entering the lease agreement with the property owner. We wouldn't actually make any payments on this land lease until the day we break ground. So if we build the tower in two weeks, that's what would trigger making a payment. If, for some reason, we just never built this, then this wouldn't go anywhere with any payments. So those are kind of the key, kind of the key highlights of it. On the lease agreement is a kind of a combination of the agreement we have with Wapaka County for utilizing one of their towers, with a mix of some statements from the agreement we have with the city of Wyawiga. So most of what's in here is just fairly standard, and we just kind of worked through it with the property owner just to kind of meet in the middle with what we were comfortable with recommending on a staff level and what the property owner was agreeable to. The lease has been reviewed by our insurance company and legal counsel, and everything is good at that end. So any questions about this? Yes.
Just one in reading it kind of quickly now, but three-year agreement with four guaranteed renewal terms, and about two dots down says either side can cut it off after, at the end of any three, so.
So what?
I may have been misinterpreting, a guaranteed four times there.
That's something that's kind of standard in some tower agreements. So we want something long-term. We don't want to spend the money to build a tower for a short period of time. So we want something built in here that we can be on this land long-term, but we want the flexibility if something changes with our situation down the road where we don't need the tower, where something changes with online, we can get out of this agreement without breaking something and having a huge penalty. So it gives us some windows of opportunity to jump out while guaranteeing we can be on that property long-term. Does that make sense? I don't know if I explained that well enough.
Josh, I was just wondering, how much is this gonna cost? And what, how many years for payback?
We're looking at the tower. We don't have an exact cost. We're waiting to get approval on this lease, and then we'll move in the next step. Very rough estimates, we're looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So we're gonna start getting quotes, you know, we're not moving forward on talk, getting permits or getting quotes until everything's good with the lease side. I think we'll have more detail soon. And as far as the payback goes, it really depends how many customers we serve off of that, how soon it gets paid back. As far as just budgeting the expense, we've got plenty of cash reserves within Wapaka Online to cover an expense like this, so we've got no issue coming up with the money. I mean, you know, I wouldn't be surprised in a year or two if we couldn't have twenty to thirty customers directly connected to this tower in addition to other connections off of it in other areas. So I mean, I don't have an exact answer. The payback as far as customers go, it's just, it's variable depending upon how many customers we end up connecting to it. But we know it's a pretty viable location.
Josh, go ahead.
As we add more customers over time, are you keeping an eye on bandwidth? And is that something that's?
Yeah, we're keeping an eye on that. We've got a five-hundred-meg symmetrical connection from Spectrum, and maybe at our max peak time, we're maybe barely touching four-hundred-meg of that.
Okay.
And I'm thinking maybe in the next year or two, we'll renegotiate that and hopefully get a gig for better pricing. But yeah, we're keeping an eye definitely on that.
Good, good. I have no complaints personally, so.
Thanks.
Okay, somebody like to make a motion?
Some of.
Motion by Chestnut.
Second.
Second by Fair, that the council approves entering into a land lease agreement between Wapaka Online and Bruce Hembrook for the purposes to install a hundred and twenty-foot tower of internet service for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month payable annually with three free internet connections, four guaranteed renewal terms with a seven-point-five percent increase per term. Discussion? Sandy, you call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chesnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Next up, we have a first reading of an ordinance that's amending our official traffic map in the city of Wapaka. So we're gonna have Justin explain this to us and remember what you told us before.
Yes, sir. So the ordinance, oh seven twenty, on page ninety-four of your packet, details the change in the ordinance, or excuse me, within the traffic map as supported by our ordinance. We want to install two twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit signs and add those to our official map. Page ninety-five shows you, I guess, the aerial of where we want to put these signs. So Webster Way and on Rotary Street, both signs are gonna be facing southbound, so they would affect northbound traffic as you turned off of Commercial and went into that subdivision, sometimes called East Gate subdivision, sometimes called Cap Services subdivision. The reason for this is that Commercial Drive is thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit. All other city streets in the city are twenty-five unless posted otherwise. There is no posted signs out there, and this subdivision is seeing a lot of growth. We expect it to be about seventy percent full, if not more, within the next two to three years. A lot of young families and coming off the thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit. We need to have that posted to make people aware they need to slow down, number one. And number two, if they don't, it can then be enforced by PD with the signs up and this ordinance being adopted by you, the council. So as, if all goes well with this, the next meeting we'll have our second reading, and then publish the newspaper August twenty-seventh, and that will, when the update will be official, and these signs can then be enforced.
All right, thanks, Justin. Anybody have any questions? First reading, this will be at our next council meeting, which is on the eighteenth of this month. All right, next up, we have revised personnel policy, and that's Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This should be fairly quick. There's a memo on page ninety-six of your packet that outlines this. It is, if you guys remember back in April, we had the personnel policy come forward that outlined the FFCRA, or the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and that was a result of a federal act that was put in place. And we worked with legal at the time, and we drafted our policy. And the only thing we're looking to revise here is that it basically was created in three silos. One of those silos was emergency responders sick leave pay. Within that silo, we had a different sunset date, and that was kind of based off of some of the conversations we had with legal at the time. I think all of us were hoping that this pandemic probably went a little shorter term than it's going to end up. And that was actually a June fifteenth date. We're just recommending to make a revision to equal the other two categories within this policy. That, we would move it from June fifteenth to December thirty-first of this year. That mirrors the federal act and the other sections, as I mentioned. As you can see, I've attached it to the memo. The only change is in red, and it's not very much. It's right there at the bottom of the last page on page one oh one. So just making that slight change. We'd be looking for a motion to approve that, or I can answer any questions if it's happening as well.
Who is that? We have a motion by Fair, second by Dimitri, you want to second it?
Yep, second.
To approve the revised personnel policy for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Any discussion? Sandy, you call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chesnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Aaron, for that. Next up, we have the operator's license, license report number fifteen oh eight. We would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve license report number fifteen oh eight. This is an operator's license pending payment of any monies owed to the city and also the background checks. Any discussion? This is a voice vote here. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, next up, then, we have our, our no-action-required discussion. This can be thirty minutes or less. And this is to talk about the continuation of the Arts Center feasibility update. And actually, I'm gonna have Aaron introduce our guest tonight, and, and, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. So we have Marcy Reynolds here tonight. You guys all know Marcy. Just to set it up, if you guys remember, back in this, in our February time period, we had talked about extending the agreement with Mr. Pedrelli with the St. Mary's site. We actually just talked about extending it again at our last council meeting. We've asked Marcy to come and give an update from the arts group on the task force that they put together and the feasibility study they've been doing on that site that would possibly lead to an arts recreation center at the St. Mary's Church. So without anything further, I'll turn it over to Marcy. And I, Marcy, just kind of let me know when I need to continue to scroll through this, okay?
Okay, thanks a lot, Aaron. You can scroll to the next screen. So we began this feasibility study, and then, of course, the pandemic happened. So we're kind of getting back on track right now, and just wanted to report to you. My brother Dan Reynolds, as everyone knows, he's my brother. He is from Holmes Radford Reynolds Fundraising in St. Louis. And he put this PowerPoint together, and it's extremely wordy. I kind of don't feel like reading it to you guys, but I can just tell you what's going on, okay? So we did put together a vision for the Arts Rec Center, and we put together a task force to do the feasibility study. And it's a, it's, the vision is to have a place where children, youth, and adults are welcome to explore and develop their creativity through the arts, to catalyst to greater economic development, fostering business growth and attracting visitors and new residents to Wapaka. So the task force of motivated citizens has been meeting, and through their input, we've done a lot of work in this downtime. So in a way, it's one of those pandemic silver minings. So what you have in front of you, I think it wasn't, I didn't have it to you in time for the packet, but there's an updated case for support. And at your leisure, you can look through that, that it really goes into greater detail, and it's been sort of evolved from the input that we've gotten from the task force members and from different, various people that we've met through, along the way, met with along the way. Okay, you can flip to the next. Okay, so the methodology, the task force is providing oversight and input into the process, including advice. And we have letters of invitation, and the preliminary case for support, which you're holding in your hands, has already gone out to ninety people. So we did get an initial list of over a hundred and thirty, I think, but we kind of narrowed it down to people that we thought would be the best advocates or give us the best feedback as to how this vision should progress. So Dan has already settled, set up several appointments with people. Of course, with the pandemic, most of the interviews now are going to be done over Zoom or the telephone. He's had really good feedback so far. He's actually conducted some of them as of today. So his priorities include finding out really what people think about this vision and if they feel that they would support it, or if there is resources in our community to support it, basically what that all says. The purpose of the study, then, is to basically look at the vision, the need, the market study, the business case, all of that, with these ninety people that we've chosen to ask. Do we have the necessary ingredients to implement a successful campaign? That's really the bottom line of this feasibility study. And when we first started this project, that was really going to be the only goal, is to see if we could raise the funds for this. But what we've learned and experienced through the pandemic, we have to have a Plan B and a Plan C. We're very, very committed to the vision of the Arts Rec Center, whether it can be done in St. Mary's or not. We want to find out what other options or suggestions people have for this vision. So in that respect, the feasibility study has morphed a little bit. We're still pretty excited about St. Mary's, but we do have those backup plans. Our feasibility amount that we want to raise is one-point-five million dollars. As far as how they're gonna do the study, you could read that if you want to, but it has to do with the questions, and they're weighted. And if anyone's ever taken a sort of a standardized test, you know that different questions have different meanings and different weights. They have a whole, like, algorithm of how they do these studies to sort of come up with the best and most scientific way to say yea or nay. So they have a benchmark score algorithm, and that's what they'll be utilizing for this. The scores are only one factor. They also have a lot of anecdotal information that they'll be getting from the people that they interview. Then they'll come up with a report, and that report will give us a really good picture of the pros and cons, perceived strengths and weaknesses of the case for support. So we're gonna learn a lot through this study. So it's not just a, okay, we can raise the money or not, but it's actually almost like a community development-type process that we're going through. So that's another added feature of hiring a fundraising company for anyone who's interested in starting a project. They really offer a lot of insight into what you're trying to do. And then key elements of the report. So you'll be getting a report when we're all done with this. And the report will, I'll just read this part. "The section describes development assets, liabilities, and confirms or suggests redefinition of the intended campaign objectives and goals." So what that means is, if it seems like we wouldn't be able to raise one-point-five million, but maybe we'd be able to raise nine-hundred thousand, it's gonna give us a sort of a picture of other ways we can accomplish our goal. And that's really important to me personally because I very, very strongly believe that we need an arts center in our town for all of the reasons that you can read in the case study. So I feel very confident that no matter what this report shows us, we're gonna be able to move forward, and we're gonna have the data and the foundation for doing it. So I guess, why don't you skip up to timeline and next steps? So the invitation letters to set up interviews were mailed July twentieth. They're scheduling interviews, and like I said, they've actually done some interviews. Their goal is actually to just complete thirty to forty. So we sent out a lot. Some people will say, I don't want to do it. I don't know if they'll stop at forty. If people want to talk, I think they're gonna do them all. But the goal, to be statistically significant and business significant, is thirty to forty interviews. They aim to conclude the interview process by the end of August and early September, and we'll have a final report ready for you guys late September or early October. Sorry, stick into it.
Thanks, Marcy.
You're welcome. Anybody have any questions about what we're doing?
Marcy, I have a quick question. You're, how often are you guys, and sorry if I miss this, how often are you guys meeting as the task force? I know the bulk of your work now, between now and October is going to be interviews, but how about that main group?
We've, we've met, I think, just five times. Now we're meeting on Zoom, of course. We had some opportunities, we've done some field trips, but it turned out that most of the task force members in the end weren't able to go. So we're doing that sort of work as well. We went to the Camp Oneel Center in Managua, which is a very similar footprint and model to what we were proposing and we spent about three hours with the executive director. So that was very, very interesting. They shared a lot of important data with us in terms of costs of running a building and insurance and all that kind of stuff and programming. We also met with a pottery studio because we want to have a pottery maker space and we really learned a lot about that. And the physical plant needs to be able to actually do that, so that was interesting. We've met with Ann Katz from Arts Wisconsin. We're going to be meeting with the Wisconsin Arts Board. We're going to be meeting with the YMCA. We met with the superintendent of schools. So various members of the task force have involved in some of those meetings, but they don't really want to meet a lot. They want to just see the work get done. So now we're really pretty much waiting for the results to come in and then we'll meet again to review the results and look at the report.
Awesome. And I know you've done an awesome, you've been gracious enough to include me in on some of those. If you have another large group meeting, do you mind inviting me?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I love it when people want to come to our meetings. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions, anything? Well, this is twice in one night, first Justin and now Marcy. Do they also have a story they want to tell? Okay, next up, we have communications recommendations of the mayor. I've had some discussion with Aaron and we'll continue to have discussions before the August 18th meeting, but we are discussing the concept of going back to virtual, complete virtual meetings for the city council meetings for at least the next 60 days or so. So we'll have that discussion and we'll let you know in the, in the near future what our decision is on that. But there's some pros and cons to it and right now, my feeling is the pros outweigh the cons of doing it virtually completely. So we'll, we'll just discuss it and we'll see what happens in the future. Just to warn you in advance. Anything else for the good of the meeting tonight? We'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is set for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. Subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for the attendance tonight and attending. Good meeting. Appreciate all your efforts. Have a great night. Go Brewers.
Thank you.